I have to give it to you. Heavenly Father, we humbly seek your blessings upon all those gathered here today, as well as upon every person's family and business within our community. As we deliberate on important policy matters, grant us the wisdom to make decisions that will safeguard our city and promote the well-being of our citizens. Amen. Thank you. Please may I say we're a pledge of allegiance on three. One, two, three.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which stands one nation, united in God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Boges.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay. Well, refresh, start again here. Okay, mayors welcome. You're all welcome, and if people are watching online at home, thank you. You save your gasoline and the traffic on the highway. I'm glad everybody's here. We are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Between you and I, we are the government. Thank you. Approval of the agenda, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, we have number eight. Is your consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Well, that takes us to public comment?
I'm sorry.
Do we have any public comment on agenda items other than the public hearings?
I believe you do, Mr. George.
I'm sorry, Mike. Is okay if I go ahead?
Please do, please do.
Great. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Benita Springs over thirty years ago.
Do you live in the city?
I've lived in the city in various times, and I...
You can't vote in the city. Is that right?
This downtown is my closest downtown. I'm a significant taxpayer. Yeah, I hope this isn't being used against my town, my time. Thank you, though, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying that. I first got my 239 Benita Springs number in 1992, and I have had it proudly ever since, including going to school at two Ivy League institutions. So that's something that I wear proudly, even though Benita Springs hasn't always been my home. But I'd like to comment on agenda item HA with regard to Riverside Park. And this relates directly into the comments that were made at the budgetary conference that preceded this meeting by Nicole Perino. And that was under a top-three city priority that I think was somewhat inaccurately referred to as aesthetic issues. And that's a misleading name, because what she addressed, and what is important to all of us, is that we have key public assets that are not in full usable condition. When those public assets are deteriorating, it's a cost to the public. The most costly thing that we can do is to leave them in disrepair and not invest as necessary to make sure that they're usable by all of our citizens. So thanks for making that a top-three priority. Let's not let the public misunderstand that you're pursuing a top-three priority that's aesthetics for the sake of aesthetics. This is about making sure that we can utilize our key public assets. And in certain areas, those key public assets, like public parks, are intertwined into key economic development regions. This is certainly the case in our downtown area. And we know there are big imbalances in the economic progress of our city, where the residential economy has grown very materially over the past few decades, but the hospitality economy and the service economy is at a very, very low level. And as we seek to fix these imbalances, it has to happen in these key areas. In those key areas in downtown, there's a wonderful mix of private and public. The public assets, those beautiful public parks, represent a big percentage lands down there. So as you are fixing these aesthetic issues and activating those public assets, you're also pursuing another key priority that you listed in economic development. So as you go through these priorities and you look at spending priorities such as HA and Riverside Park, and the other things that Ms. Perino discussed with you, please know, they're really important to activate public assets for the best public use, to activate economic development. And thank you again for your great service to our city. Thanks.
Public comment, please come. Wow, all these people. Okay, now your consent agenda.
I made a motion.
Second.
Any comments?
I thought we...
No, we have not voted yet on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Philip, Nelson, Nigel?
Sir?
Are you number nine, the art in public places?
Um...
Karen?
Well...
Make a motion to approve?
That's all.
You've got quite a resume there.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Okay, presentation of financial statement of last year.
Yes, at this time, our finance director will come forward. Wow.
Hello, good evening. We have tonight here Tony Smith. He's a partner with our CPA firm. We do like to call to your attention, everyone should have your audit, the audit of the city's financial statement in front of you. And for those of you online, it is loaded on our website. We do want to call to your attention that contained in this audit is a certificate of achievement for excellent in financial reporting that the city has received every year for many years, and we're happy to have it again. And if y'all could give Tony patience, he legally has to go through certain parts of this very dry report, but he's going to call your attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Again, my name is Tony Smith. I'm a partner with Ashley Brown Smith CPAs, your current auditor. I'd like to start off by just thanking everyone here for hiring us. We've been your auditor for a few years now, and we appreciate the opportunity. Every staff in our office has a favorite auditing audity, and for most of our staff, the city of Benita is that one. With that, what helps with making it so easy for us is an efficient audit is the staff. You've always had a really good staff, and by the addition, with the addition of Darcy and Evan, Evan Grant, it's added to the efficiencies. Lisa pointed out the certificate of achievement. Let me geek out a little bit for you. In the accounting world, the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting is a big deal. So it is just one page in your financial statements, but it does lay reference to you as a city and your staff as well. So just to go over these statements, if you guys have any questions for me, feel free to stop, stop me in the middle of it. But you have, everybody's got a copy of them? Yes, okay. So page two, page two is the, what might be the most important part of the opinion of the financial statements. You issued a clean opinion for this, so I'm just going to read one paragraph in it. It's the second paragraph down on page two. "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund financial information of the city as of September 30." Additionally, this year, we also conducted a federal single audit. So since, once you expend more than $750,000 of federal grant money, you're required to have this additional audit. So on page four, the third paragraph down, "In our opinion, the combining an individual non-major fund financial statements and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards are fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements." To go, to continue on with, I won't cover every single opinion. There are multiple opinions within your financial statements, and you can follow that with your table of contents, but we'll hit the bigger ones. On page 97, "This opinion is over compliance and interim control over compliance." This is regarding your federal single audit that you've had. So on the second paragraph, "In our opinion, the city complied in all material respects with the requirements that are applicable to each of its major federal programs for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023." So we're required to select a, conduct a selection of your federal grants and then test a sample of those. Again, on page 101, which is, this is the schedule of findings and question costs for your federal single audit. So just to go over, section three is the findings. There were no findings required to be reported for this item. And lastly, on page 109, briefly halfway down through the paragraph, it reads, "The results of our tests disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported." So with that, that is, I've covered what I'm legally required to cover, but if you have questions, I'm happy to go over any of those.
I'd like to also say our staff is fabulous, and thirteen years we've gotten the achievement awards, so...
Very good. Yes, ma'am.
What do you think about going out to bid?
It's expensive. Nowadays, Florida statute has added, I think, ten pages to what their RFP process is. I mean, it's a rigorous process. You know, usually in the time where we're doing interim work, preparing for the next financial statement audit, we're using staff time to try to prepare for the next audit. Staff has to take excessive amounts of time to not only prepare what that RFP is, the requirements for, also required to respond to them.
Do you know how long your firm has audited us? Is it three years?
We have audited your firm, I believe, I believe, at least thirteen years. Since I've been with the firm, we've been your auditor. There was a, I think there was a time, maybe a year or two in between that, where we weren't.
Well, we've been a city for twenty-five years, so we have had somebody else.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I just wondered if you, I'm supposed to look for waste, fraud, and corruption. And when we get into money, you can't get in bed with everybody.
Sure.
So I'm just curious.
Well, we appreciate, will appreciate the opportunity to bid on the...
I've been to city council for most of twenty-five years, and always, our staff does a wonderful job.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to make sure everybody's hunky-dory.
Yeah, going out for RFP isn't a bad thing. It keeps everyone honest, right? I mean, we're...
That's what the whole idea is, isn't it?
We submit on each RFP. It's a quality-based selection, right? So it's not based off of price. We're not selecting who the cheapest firm is for the selection. You're going off qualification.
Is your contract up this year? I thought it said it was a three-year...
Included in the consent agenda, you agreed to extend for a one-year term.
Do we do that every year, or...
Lisa's going to give you the...
Okay, Lisa.
Yes, we have one more year renewal, and then we'll be going out for, request for proposals for audit services. And it is a very rigorous process. We have to follow Florida statute, and most of the items he pointed out to you today by Florida law and his professional CPA ethics, he has to present to you all as a governing body. So we want to thank him for his time.
Next year at this time, you'll be going out to audit, going out for bid.
Yes, yes, at some point, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. The best staff in the world.
And thank you, Ashley Brown and Smith.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me add here. Public hearing. John or Mike, are you coming to introduce this item?
I'll read the, I'll go ahead and, the first item is a, is an ordinance. So I'll go ahead and I'll read the title. I gave Mike a break. He's going to read the next two. It's considered a transmittal to the Florida Department of Commerce. The following proposed amendments, the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan pursuant to case CPA 74175, BOS, Revanna Lakes 1, amend the city's future land use map for approximately 204.5 plus or minus acres of land from the Density Reduction Groundwater Resource (DRGR) wetlands and Resource Protection Future Land Use Categories to the Urban Fringe Community District and Resource Protection 2, amend the text to the Urban Fringe Community District.
Good evening, counsel. Mike Fegan with the city for the record, community development. Per usual, we're going to let the applicant go first. I'll just give you a brief introduction of what this case is. Derek summed it up nicely in the title of the requested motion. It does have to do with amending the city's comprehensive plan, specifically the future land use element, which would include both a text amendment and a map amendment. Right now, only a portion of the overall project area is located within your jurisdictional boundaries. So in addition to this request, they have filed the necessary annexation paperwork to bring the remainder of the project into the city so that all of it would be under unified city control within the city's jurisdictional boundaries. This application was heard by the local planning agency back in May. You do have a copy of the meeting minutes in your packet with their recommendation. You do also have the full application backup that was made available to you online that included the TIS and the environmental reports, all the lengthy things. If we gave you a hard copy of that, this portion of your packet alone would have been several hundred pages, but it is all there for your inspection. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alexis...
What was the recommendation?
Of the LPA? The recommendation of the LPA was to deny the applicant's request. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the applicant, and Alexis Crespo with RVI Planning to walk you through the proposal, and then staff will be here to back clean up afterwards. Thank you.
Hey, hi.
Hi, good evening. Alexis Crespo with RVI, representing the applicant. I'm just going to open our PowerPoint and hand it over to Neil Montgomery.
Right here.
I'm trying. Ooh, okay. This mouse is difficult.
Good evening, for the record. Neil Montgomery, and I'd like to introduce the team tonight. With me is Mr. Price with Seagate Development. I heard the gentleman earlier talk about aesthetics and economic development. For those of you who drive north on I-75 on the east side, North Valico, you see a beautiful building the Seagate has done, and you'll learn more about the other high-quality work that they do. I'm Neil Montgomery, and with me is our planner, Alexis Crespo, Noel Villan, and Brandon from Atwell, they're the engineers. Christian Casey is going to talk about environmental. Yuri Baikow is the transportation expert, and David Brown does hydrogeology, which is really complex, but he makes it easy for us. The property in question is 204 acres. 114 is in the city, 90 is in the county. And when this was, the parts that are in the city were annexed about the time that BG Mine and some other properties, and they came in in five and 10-acre increments. That's why you see the sort of interesting property ownership pattern, but that's all been acquired now by Seagate. Part of the property is zoned for natural resource extraction, otherwise known as mining, and those permits or zoning is still valid. As Mr. Rooney indicated, we're here to request a comp plan amendment and a transmittal to change the property from density reduction groundwater resource and resource protection and wetland future land use category to urban fringe community and resource protection. I would also note that part of the properties in the county is in the county DRGR, and the property that's in the city is in the city, and those two aren't exactly the same. And there's also a companion tax amendment. Alexis is going to elaborate on this, but the property's been under review and consideration for a long time, and the team has spent a lot of time meeting with residents. They've had meetings in various locations so that they can reach as many people as possible to help them understand what the request is and to answer their questions. And as Mr. Rooney noted, it's filed with the companion annexation to incorporate all the property. When property is annexed into the city, it comes in with the county zoning and county future land use categories. So to consolidate this, you need to transmit a plan amendment so it can all be in one future land use category, and we've also filed for a plan development to allow it all to be in one zoning district. This map helps to demonstrate the parts of the property that are in the county and the parts that are in the city. One of the things I think you guys just spent a lot of time talking about is economics. One of the biggest advantages to annexing this property and developing it in the city is the impact fees. The road impact fees and park impact fees, if property develops in the county, go to the county. If the property's in the city, those funds go to the city, and the city gets to decide where and how they get spent. Likewise, when the property's in the city, it always subject to the city taxation and not the county taxation, which also a significant benefit to the city. And if it's all in the city, the city gets to decide how it develops, how it looks, and how it blends in with the rest of the city. Otherwise, the parts that are in the county would develop under their rules. I know that there's been a lot of discussion or, oops, concern about we need to save land. What you see in green is all in public ownership. It may be South Florida or the trustees, the Internal Improvement Trust Fund, or Lee County, or other government entities, but all the green has been set aside for future conservation and will not be subject to future development. I don't think you can see it very well, but to the north of this property, you see a blue line. That's the canal. So that has become sort of like a demarcation line or a separation between the drainage to the north and the drainage to the south of that, and you'll hear more about that later. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Price, who can elaborate on their vision for the city and the project.
Good evening, everybody. Matt Price, CEO and one of the partners at Seagate Development Group. I usually talk forever, so I was told to keep it very brief. You've been here for a long time, so I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Seagate. We're a local developer. We started about ten years ago. My father and I and another partner, James, all started the company. James is not here. Unfortunately, he's taking care of his father up in Ohio right now, or he'd be here with us. Bill is here. My father's here. He's in the back. So it's us three partners. We're a family company. We've been around for ten years. We have over 300 employees, all local here in Lee County. Two of the partners actually live in Quell West, which is pretty much right across the street from this project. So obviously, our partners have vested interest in this area as well. I'm not one of those partners. I still live in Fort Myers, but James and Bill live in Quell West. We specialize in best-in-class communities. Typically, what that means is we'll take a piece of ground and we'll look for highest and best use. A lot of developers do that by maximizing density. We all know that density leads to traffic and some other issues. So we try to take different routes of that. We've developed, I don't know if there's, we've developed other communities where we've been able to keep density down in other areas. The southern tip of Boca Grand, we did a smaller density piece of ground on 10 acres. Oh, you're going to advance my slide. See, this is what happens. I'm usually the tech guy, too. So southern tip of Boca Grand. We're also working on a project out in Vanderbilt. We're doing 51 lots out there, where every other national was trying to do over 200. So we really try to focus on putting the right project together. We had the opportunity to either take this in Lee County or the city. We felt that with a lower density and a different community there, felt more like a city project than Benita Springs address. So that's where we kind of focused. So that's kind of the background of where we're coming from. These are the type of homes you'll see. There will be all sorts of homes in here, but we have our grand estate lots, which will, some of the bigger homes, and then they get a little bit smaller, you know, probably in the million-plus range is where we'll start. So that's kind of the community. We're asking for 299 units. We're down from 338 before, and I think when we started this project, it was over 500, but we kind of took that down very quickly after going through the process. I do want to, I think, Mr. Mayor, you said, staff, you do have a great staff. We've been working with them for two-plus years, and we've had some knockout, drag-out conversations, but they're passionate about what they're trying to do, and I think that we worked well with them and took a lot of their recommendations into account as we went through this. So I hope, I hope after this process that you'll be able to approve this, and we appreciate the time and effort that's gone into this to get to this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
What is the DRGR? That's a really good question. And the answer to that starts back with Lee County. Lee County got into dispute with an agency that used to be called Department of Community Affairs, and there used to be a rule called 9J5. And what it did was put a straitjacket on local governments as to how much future population they'd be allowed to have. And the other issue that came up was, Lee County had no idea where their future water supply was going to be. So in their, so they had a settlement agreement with the Department of Community Affairs. So what they basically did was took a lot of the property to the east and along the northern boundary of the county, and they called it all DRGR. And then around 2011, Governor Scott couldn't quite figure out why our economy was in the doldrums, and one of the reasons was because of the restrictions that had been placed on all the governments. So they eliminated all of 9J5, and so the population accommodation, the R basis for the category went away. And then there was the GR, groundwater resource. And one of the things the legislator did was said, you know what? Why are we having local governments try to figure out future water supply when that's not really what they do? That's what the water management districts do. So they require the water management districts to create water supply plans. So South Florida, for our area, created the Lower West Coast Water Supply Plan. And then they said to local governments, okay, we got the agency to do it for you. Now we want you to adopt it into your comprehensive plan. And I believe just recently, you folks did adopt the latest update to the water supply plan into your comprehensive plan. So that takes care of the GR. You know where your water's coming from now because the agencies that are responsible for consumption use permits work on that and help you with that issue. This is the map that was originally adopted, the future land use map where the DRGR was located. So you can see the areas basically are large land holdings. They just put in that category. The city didn't exist at that time, but for those of you who live east of the interstate and south of Benita Beach Road, you might notice those properties were in the DRGR. And at the time, those properties were primarily farm fields, and the farmers, Mr. Garjul, Billy Don Grant, others, said to the county when they were adopting this, well, wait a minute. We have consumption use permits for all the water from this property for our field. How can you save it for somebody else? So they said, well, just come back in and we'll fix it. Well, it didn't, it wasn't necessarily exactly that easy. They did get it fixed, but primarily because after the city incorporated, the city revisited it. And when the city revisited it, around 2003, when you adopted your first comprehensive plan, you put the properties into these categories. plan, you put the properties into these categories, and they are now what I would call some of your nicest communities in the city, and you have lots of your residents are from this area, and you have the benefit of those properties paying impact fees into the city and not the county. So we'd like the same category, as you can see the yellow. So that's the kind of similar category with adjustments that they'd like to have on this property. And again, you can see the same conservation areas to the north that are still going to be protected. The county has made changes. We've already shared with you that part of the property is in the county, and the county has made adjustments to the DR GR. Some of those were map changes, Timber Creek, Daniel South, those have been approved for residential and commercial. Two of the changes were through Burt Harris actions because there's very limited uses in the DR GR, and if you're going to not allow mining and add citrus isn't viable, the question is what do you do with those properties? So FFD in Kingston were a result of settlement agreements, and then the place for Donna, while blue, were a modification to the comp plan that allowed them to protect flowways and increase density. So there's a definite pattern of recognizing that there's no longer the underlying basis for the DR GR, and the county is moving in the direction of allowing a reasonable use of the property. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alexis Crespo.
Thank you again, Alexis Crespo with RBI. Neil did a good job of big-picture DR GR discussions, so I'm going to bring it to the subject property, explain the proposed amendment and really the project we intend to develop here, but also really address Bonita Springs DR GR, because we know we're not in Lee County. We know there have been policy decisions by members of this council and previous councils regarding conversion of DR GR lands. And what I would like to start with is that approving this project, approving this DR GR conversion can exist without undoing that policy decision from the past, and it's really because this site is so geographically unique compared to the Bonita Grand Mine, compared to Sepira, where we're located in context of DR GR, the level of impact, the available infrastructure, the development pattern, et cetera. So I want to walk you through that. Of course, you know, the DR GR is shown in gray on this map, this is the adopted future land use map. You have that large chunk of gray that where the arrow is pointing, that's where those projects live. Now, Bonita Grand Mine is in the green hatching under the arrow, but this is your large swath of DR GR. This is an area with relatively poor roadway access. This is an area with intermittent levels of rural development. It's not well-served by public infrastructure. Our site, on the other hand, is the only remnant piece of DR GR, a budding Bonita Beach Road, east of Bonita Grand, that's still in this future land use category, excuse me. Therefore, just want to start with the different context in terms of your DR GR. This was brought in from the county again, and really does not interrelate with any DR GR lands within the city, other than, I will say, the fire station is within DR GR. So I've noted this, this is just a zoomed-in look at the subject property. This is not the complete property, as lands are within Lee County, not shown here, but it's, again, isolated from the city's DR GR. So looking at this corridor, we know that the lands to the west of us are within Lee County, we know some of our property is within Lee County. We want to be in the city of Bonita Springs, we see a lot of value in that, both for the property developer, but also for the city that we'll walk through. And we want to talk through what Lee County is doing along this corridor, so it's clear what's occurring on this arterial roadway. And I really want to just focus again on those lands that butt Bonita Beach Road to our immediate west. So we know the racetrack has been there for several years now, right at the corner. Recently, Lee County approved a townhome project at 14 units per acre. That includes bonus density, this is a Pulte Townhomes project, and if you've driven down Bonita Beach Road, you know this is already under development, so that's 157 units on just over 11 acres. So that is the next parcel of land, and that's a site plan of their very dense development program and development order plan set. Now, as we move further west, there is a commercial plan development under review currently by Lee County to allow for a mix of commercial retail uses on that abutting subject property. Moving further west, you encounter a single-family home lot, and then the Saldivar migrant housing camp. Then further west of that, you have the Sanctuary RV Park, and then you have some, let me go back, and then you have those vacant parcels with remnant mining operations visible by the lakes. So what we're submitting to you is this scrap of DR GR is abutting lands in Lee County that are either rapidly converting to development or imminently will be one day when the land values increase to a point where the migrant housing camp is no longer a viable use. And this in and of itself makes us very different from the other DR GR applications you've reviewed. Along those lines, looking at the infrastructure, we are abutting a four-lane arterial roadway. We have two points of access proposed on our plan, as I'll show you. We are just a few miles to the east of I-75 major regional corridor. We have excellent access to the Logan Extension to provide access to Collier County, so very well-served from a transportation standpoint. We also have water and sewer mains along the roadway that we can tie into. We do have demonstration of capacity from Bonita Springs Utilities to serve the project for both water and sewer. We are proximate to the BSU Water Plant to provide that service, and then also have fire and EMS, so very well-located in terms of the services you need to support new growth, which really is the definition per year comprehensive plan of smart growth. You want to locate new development where you have these services and not up two-lane roads that are underserved. Neil touched on this, the portion of the property in gray is still in Lee County, it is an approved mine, planned mine excavation, planned development, and those uses are currently permitted and do not grandfather because zonings in Lee County do not sunset. So at any point in time, Seagate could defer to the available mining uses within Lee County on the project. They certainly do not want to do that, they know that would certainly upset the neighbors, but it is a development right they have today. I would note they also have the ability to blast. This is our map change we're proposing, you can see we're proposing the urban fringe community. The city of Bonita Springs, post-incorporation, did approve DR GR conversion for what is now the Valencia and Bonita National Projects at the eastern terminus of the road. So this is, this is the future land use category that the city has deemed appropriate since their incorporation along the Bonita Beach Road corridor. And as you note, through the text amendment changes, we further limited density to ensure compatibility with, with the surrounding neighborhoods. Before I turn it over to our environmental consultant to speak, I just want to get into a little bit more of the details. We typically try to keep the zoning and the comprehensive plan amendment separate, but this is our transmittal hearing, we, we need this vote tonight to move forward, and so we do think it's important you understand the quality of the project and the efforts and lengths we've gone to bring forward a really quality project to the city and balance the needs of the community with what exists on the site. So you can see there are two points of ingress egress from Bonita Beach Road, they line up with the Palmiera entrances. That was purposefully done to provide safe access in case one of the access was ever sealed, but also to distribute trips to two different access points to alleviate congestion along the roadway. We certainly would intend this to be a gated community, those gates would be located far off the roadway, and what we hope you notice is the green hatched area along Bonita Beach Road. These preserve areas are upwards of 800 feet in this large segment, and then several hundred feet where these tracks abut the roadway. So what we would submit is based on this design, as you travel along the roadway, you will see thick lush vegetation, you will not be seeing townhomes or development right up on the roadway, but a very well-designed project to ensure attractive views for the community, and really not a significant change from what they see today. We discussed changes over time, we have been at this for about four and a half years now. We have redesigned the project, it started with a request for about 600 units, we trimmed that down to 388. When we went to the LPA, we saw there was concern about density and really trips along Bonita Beach Road, so we sharpened our pencils and reduced that to 299 dwelling units, which is 1.5 units per acre. So we've trimmed this down to just a single-family attached community in the yellow, and then single-family detached is an option in this purple area. The other change that evolved over time, working with your staff, is the inclusion of a neighborhood commercial center that would be at the eastern portion of the site. Again, it will be well-screened by Preserve, but we worked with staff on limiting the schedule of uses so that it could be truly neighborhood-serving uses, like a small grocer, salons, dry cleaners, things of that nature. They asked us to remove mini warehouse, which we were glad to do, they wanted to see more, more uses that could save trips going down to the Publix at Bonita Grand, and so that was a good change to the project. Another change is conveyance of a public trail system along our Keel Canal frontage. That was something that can tie into the South Florida Water Management District trails and that are up and coming in the area, and we thought a nice public enhancement for the city. The last thing I want to touch on, which our engineer will touch on in more detail, is you'll notice the large blue areas, these are our stormwater management lakes. Obviously, after a tropical storm, it's important to note, this water management system is fully designed, it's fully permitted by the Southwest Florida Water Management District. Typically, you're not here at a zoning hearing or a comp plan hearing with your ERP in hand. They have spent the, the time and money to get their full water management and environmental permits from the state to ensure that this is designed not only to the state standards, but to the city of Bonita Springs' higher standard. You have a much more stringent standard due to the good work of this council than Lee County or the Water Management District requires, and this site will comply with that. Lastly, I'll note, the outfall goes to the north to Keel Canal and would not be draining towards Bonita Beach Road or communities to our south. I will come back to close out, but I will hand it over to Christian Casey for the environmental.
The existing site consists primarily of disturbed land, pine flatwoods, low-quality wetlands that have been invaded by exotics. The majority of this site has been disturbed by agricultural, mining, and residential activities. The development plan was designed to preserve the highest-quality wetlands along the western portion of the property and Bonita Beach Road while impacting the previously disturbed portions of the site. A protected species survey was conducted December 2021. During the survey, no species listed by either the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission or the United States Fish and Wildlife Services were observed. To identify if Florida bond and bats were utilizing the site for either nesting or foraging, an acoustic survey was conducted in October 2022 through January of 2023. The survey concluded that Florida bond and bats were not utilizing the property for nesting or foraging. All wildlife surveys conducted concluded that listed species were not utilizing the The South Florida Water Management District has extensively reviewed the proposed development footprint and has issued an environmental resource permit for the project. This project has met all preservation and protected species criteria. If the site is approved consistent with the ERP, all exotic vegetation within the preserves will be removed. With that, I'll hand it off to Noel.
Hi, good evening. As Alexis has already kind of touched on, the project is located next to Bonita Beach Road, and within the right-of-way, there is a 12- to 16-inch water main on the south side and a 16-inch sewer main on the north side of Bonita Beach Road. We do already have letters of availability from Bonita Springs Utilities, and the fire station as well is located within two miles of the project. The stormwater design has been, as stated, approved through South Florida Water Management, and it was done based on not only their regulations and criteria, but the city of Bonita Springs' criteria, which is higher than Lee County, for the treatment and attenuation of the stormwater. The project, oh, sorry, I forgot about this thing. The project does discharge to the north to the Keel Canal, all the lakes are interconnected as well. And I will turn it over to Yuri for transportation.
For the record, Yuri Baika with T.R. Transportation Consultants. I will briefly go over some of the transportation aspects of this project. However, the very first thing I want to mention, as Alexis previously mentioned, following our LPA hearing, we actually reduced our residential development intensity from 388 dwelling units down to 299 dwelling units. And in terms of traffic, that equates approximately 749 fewer daily trips, so it's actually quite a significant reduction in traffic from what we previously presented in front of the LPA hearing. In terms of access, access to this property will be provided to Bonita Beach Road, which is a Lee County-maintained arterial roadway, so we have adequate access to the project, and our driveways onto this road will be designed and permitted with the county Department of Transportation. As previously mentioned, we're proposing a mixed-use project, which includes a commercial component, and this commercial component is important because it provides direct commercial opportunity, not only for the future residents of this project, but also for the existing residents and public who travels on this roadway, to provide a commercial opportunity to use our neighborhood commercial project, which in theory reduces the vehicles' miles traveled along the Bonita Beach Road corridor. So it's a very important aspect of this project as well. And as part of our traffic study, we prepared our typical, what we like to call 10,000-foot link-level service analysis. We prepared our analysis based on the worst-case scenario, which included the 388 dwelling units, which again, we've now reduced to 299, as well as the commercial components. And the results of our link-level service analysis indicate that the proposed comprehensive plan amendment request will not cause any level service issues on the surrounding roadway network. In other words, we're not causing any roadways to operate below their adopted level service standards. And again, the one thing I want to also emphasize is that this project still has to go a long way to go before any vertical development is approved. We still have to go through rezoning process, at which we prepare another traffic study. After that, we have to go through a development order process, which again, we prepare another traffic study. That traffic study gets very detailed, it gets into discussion and evaluation of any churning improvements, et cetera, that'll be required by the actual development on the property. So again, there's still a lot of more traffic analysis to be done before this project gets any vertical development approved, so this is just one of the first steps in this long process. Thank you. And now I'll have David Brown to come up to present.
Good evening, I'm David Brown, I'm a certified professional geologist and hydrologist. I've been practicing for 41 years in southwest Florida, eight of those years I was at the Southwest Florida Water Management District. Today, I'm going to go through the ground and surface water resources of the subject property. You're going to see a lot of black and white photographs in this, I hope you like them. The project site is composed of a mixture of Heidrick Flatwoods and Cypress communities that are punctuated by islands, and that is my term for slightly elevated areas that exhibit, you know, slightly increased elevation. These islands are kind of muted or eroded sand ridges that represent dune deposits, and these deposits are roughly parallel to the coastline. So those dune deposits are kind of superimposed on a flat marine terrace, and so the dune deposits have exhibited themselves today as flatwoods, whereas these flat marine terraces are the wetlands that surround these flatwood areas. This is to kind of give you a graphic of what I'm talking about, so you have this very flat topographic plain with these slightly elevated sand ridges, which are the Flatwood Islands, again, surrounded by Cypress and Heidrick pine wetlands. I'm going to zoom in, so this, this is a fascinating image to me on the left-hand side. I'm going to zoom in. So this, this is a fascinating image to me on the left-hand side. Uh, this is nineteen fifty-eight, obviously pre-development. I put on a yellow line that's horizontal that crosses across the bottom of that image. That's uh Bonita Beach roadway right there. And I've kind of outlined a little area that's a square in the center of that. Uh, and so there you can see these sand ridges. You can see these ancient dune deposits in this image. And so the, the picture that's in the middle now, I've kind of zoomed in on that little black square and kind of shown you kind of a, a more enhanced visual uh expression of this. And you can see these elongated, very muted, you know, slightly elevated areas that are these flatwoods. And they're oriented predominantly north-south, so that dictates surface water flow. So you get water that kind of channels through in between these Flatwood areas. If you look to the right, that's a recent aerial image. And you can see kind of that same one, that zigzag that I show in the middle is kind of shown there on that right-hand image. And you can see things have changed pretty dramatically uh in twenty twenty-three. But the thing to take away from this image on the right, if you look at the horizontal line, which is the Keel Canal, look at the change in vegetation that has occurred from that point south. So there's been obviously a very, a dramatic change in hydrology that has changed the vegetation. It's a lot of nuisance and exotics and, and the, and again, due to that change in hydrology from the Keel Canal. So I'm going to go a little bit more to the Keel Canal. This is a nineteen sixty-two aerial image of the, of that same area. So if you look on the left-hand side, and if you look farther to the, to the left, you'll see I've kind of labeled the Imperial River. You can see kind of that black dendritic pattern typical of, of natural drainage features. And then you see, superimposed from that extending east is the excavation of the Keel Canal. Obviously, that was a tremendous amount of disturbance that occurred, and the Keel Canal obviously feeds into the Imperial River. And if you look at this on the right-hand side, that image, this is a blow-up of that same area. You'll start to see that there's, there's, these wetlands surrounding those muted ridges have kind of like a black border. So there's a change in vegetation around those little islands or upland areas. And if you look on the image, and it's pretty easy from your vantage point, you'll see that south of the Keel Canal, those black boundaries are turning white. Basically, you can see as of nineteen sixty-two, when they dug the Keel Canal, it severed the surface water flow from north to south. And now those features are starting to dry up south of the Keel Canal. So the hydrology has changed. Vegetation hasn't changed at this point, but the hydrology has already changed as of nineteen sixty-two. So just to kind of drive home this point, in the background, if this is the property outlined in yellow. And on the eastern side of it, I have the pre-development image prior to the Keel Canal. Again, you can see these little sand ridges and this dark kind of banding or border that goes around these elevated areas where you have that transitional vegetation. And again, water is flowing in between those areas. Then you look on the left-hand side, when the Keel Canal was put in, and you see uh up at the top, you can also see the extension of, of Kerry Street. But if you look south of the Keel Canal on the left-hand picture, you can see that that black border that exists around those muted sand ridges is gone, and now they're white below that. So this is really diagnostic of a change in hydrology as a result of that canal being excavated. So why does the Keel Canal affect vegetation and change the hydrology? This graphic on the top, if you look at the horizontal line on the top image, it's kind of a, a dash line with a little uh inverted red uh triangle. That's what the median water level would have been basically uh in natural conditions prior to development. Obviously, at times of the year, it would go above land surface. Dry season, it would go below. So it oscillates kind of in that range. When you dug the Keel Canal or when that was constructed, that lowered the water table. Because the Keel Canal is a conveyance feature. It was put into drain areas to the east, and it's very effective at doing that. And so by do, by having this canal, it lowered the water table and can impact areas hundreds of feet in both directions from the Keel Canal. But the big thing about the Keel Canal is, is it severed that hydrologic flow from north to south. And you saw that in that vegetative change. The Keel Canal also has a control structure on Bonita Grand Road, so it's a highly controlled feature, okay? So it's not a naturally flowing waterway by any means. And then if you look on the, the lower right-hand side, that's the Keel Canal at Radio Tower Road, which is east of the project. And you can see some of the disturbance in, in what the Keel Canal looks like in this particular area. Now let's focus on the property itself. This is a LiDAR image uh on the left-hand side. LiDAR stands for Light Detection and Ranging. It's a great tool for looking at differences in elevation and land surface elevation. In this particular image, the higher elevations are orange, kind of deep orange, almost reddish-looking. You can see some of that along the right-hand side. Then you get a little yellow fringe as you drop down in elevation, then there's green, and then ultimately you get to blue, which is the water-filled pits. That's the lowest elevation. So you get an idea, if you look at that, that this is a highly disturbed piece of property. In fact, those two limestone mine pits, one's about twenty-seven acres currently, the other's about eleven acres, that makes up about nineteen percent of the entire project area, or these mine pits. But more particularly, the one on the right-hand side, the industrial area, all of the surface soils have been stripped off, all the so-called overburden above it. So there's no soil storage there. So there's no real ability to recharge. There's nothing to hold that water when it rains uh in that particular area. So recharge potential has been dramatically reduced on that side of the property. So again, uh, onsite activities have further disturbed the site. So what are my conclusions? This property is significantly isolated hydrologically from the crew lands to the north. It has been severed from surface water flow. That has exacerbated uh dysfunctional hydrology, promoting the growth of nuisance and exotic species. We have trapped, isolated basins on this property, those limestone pits that can exhibit very low dissolved oxygen. So overall, this property is in a highly disturbed state, and that explains what you saw in the image of the change and the nuisance and exotics and all the vegetation changes that have occurred south of the Keel Canal. So there's a reason for that. So what are some of the things that we can do? First off, if this project is approved, we'll start taking detailed water quality, understanding dissolved oxygen and any nutrients that are onsite. That water quality would be taken during construction, and then we've offered to continue that water quality monitoring as the development fills out and goes through build-out, so that we have kind of a continuum of water quality analysis on this particular project. Also, we're going to have routing of stormwater. You, you heard that earlier, okay? Having a engineered stormwater management system. That water is going to basically be promoting recharge on certain areas of the property where recharge does not occur. And then it's going to run through those mine pits. That's going to help with dissolved oxygen and other aspects, because now we're going to have kind of a flowing system again. Right now, you have a very stagnant, isolated system. So routing that stormwater through that will actually improve water quality rather than degrade water quality. And again, we're going to have that water quality sampling to make sure that that occurs. And the water quality sampling will serve as kind of an audit technique to make sure that these best management practices are being adhered to. For irrigation, we're going to use the stormwater ponds for irrigation and recycle that water. This is a pump station that I worked on in another development in Lee County. So these serve as, as really good sources for irrigation supply. So we're actually going to be recycling and recirculating that stormwater and use it for, for irrigation. Also, uh, the removal of nuisance and exotic species. I've been all over this piece of property. It is choked with nuisance and exotic species. That has further degraded the hydrology, because it has crowded out. You have vegetative damming and all sorts of aspects onsite. So removing that will actually improve flowways and, and also help with the hydrology uh and help us improve recharge on the site. I, I didn't mention this before, but the irrigation system would be a master-controlled irrigation system. So no individual homeowner would have the ability to activate or prolong an irrigation cycle. When you have a master-controlled system like that, it basically, it, it really enhances and enforces water conservation. In addition to that, we put together an enhanced lake management plan that really gets into the stormwater management, which also apply to the mine pits, uh, that goes through a lot of best management practices that would have to be followed, again, during construction and post-construction, all of these to safeguard the water resources. So my professional opinion, in its current state, this piece of property does not fit the characteristics of the DRGR. Okay? Its ecological value to the Cork Crew Swamp ecosystem watershed is non-existent. It's severed from that system by the Keel Canal. So the proposed residential, uh, residential development gives us a unique opportunity to enhance and improve the hydrology of this highly impacted site. And all of this can be done at no cost to the city. Thank you very much.
All right. Again, Alexis Crespo, just to wrap up and conclude for the, the applicant. So to, to sum up, uh, the testimony from our team, um, we believe this amendment is entirely compatible, not only with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Bonita Springs Comprehensive Plan, but it will be compatible with the development pattern along Bonita Beach Road. We've trimmed the density down and down again um to address some of the comments we heard. We did have a follow-up community meeting after the LPA as well, which was not very well-attended, but we got positive feedback at that meeting for the reduction in density. This will be a community by a quality local developer that owns the property, and our, our firm has personally worked on most of the sites you saw on their slide. We are offering public enhancements, including a trail system, improved water management, as David um noted, and a neighborhood commercial center to help reduce vehicle miles traveled along the Bonita Beach Road corridor. You've heard about the environmental benefits of removing the exotics, rehydrating the site, having water quality monitoring, um, open space along the Keel Canal. Um, and you've also heard about the flooding mitigation through our master design, the, again, the Water Management District has approved, and that if developed in the city would um comply with your higher standards. There's also the benefits that Neil spoke of, of having local control. You haven't seen the zoning yet. This is the first of many hearings on this project. This just simply allows the state to review our data and analysis, and it will come back to you with the zoning um at a, at a final hearing. Um, we do respectfully request you transmit it. Um, let us proceed through this process. It will allow you to make the decision um on what is appropriate on the site versus Lee County. Um, it will also ensure the design is consistent with Bonita's higher standards than the county. It will allow for increased tax base that will go back into the city's coffers instead of the county's coffers, and it will give the impact fees of the project to the rightful owner of those, which is the city of Bonita Springs, because we, certainly the residents of the site would utilize the city's infrastructure to a much greater degree than the counties. And we just have some of those figures uh on, on the board there of close to four million in impact fees is what the project uh would generate with the reduced unit count rate. So with that, um, again, we respectfully request your approval to transmit, and we're happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, the commercial space, it's approximately a hundred thousand square feet?
We've reduced that figure down to thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet. It was a hundred thousand when we had mini warehouse. When we removed that use, we did not need that much, that much square footage.
Okay, so that in mind, what's the, John, you're here, can you give me a quick answer? What's the size of, say, a small Publix? What is that, square footage? Eighty thousand? So my concern is, what is out there right now that's going to service that community and some of the other communities? I'm assuming with that many units, you're going to have about six hundred people there, six hundred and fifty people, residents?
Approximately two people per unit, yes. Uh, with the thirty-nine thousand five hundred square foot, that could accommodate a sprouts and several other outpartial-type uses. So it, it wouldn't be another Publix um on that site, but there's certainly smaller grocers um that can fit within that footprint.
Do you have any ones that's indicated in interest?
I would have to defer to the Seagate and the developers. They, I, I believe they're not putting this out to market until we get through some of the land use and entitlement hurdles. But they certainly have delivered commercial projects in, in their portfolio and do have connections with, with commercial uh end-users that they would take to market upon uh approval.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the, the gentleman that made the comment that it's going to be a while. What is a while before you would go vertical if this was approved?
We would have to file our uh city of Bonita Springs Development Order, which is our construction plan permit, do further, a more detailed traffic study, and another more detailed environmental study. That usually takes about eight to nine months to get that permit approved. We would also have to get our utilities permit. So the earliest we could break ground would be in twenty twenty-five, probably mid-year, around twenty twenty-five. And then, a community like this, at the price points you heard, Matt Price indicate, this is not a, a national home builder that's selling, you know, thirty units a month. This is, this is going to be a, a slow progression through the site based on their custom home program.
Yeah. Did you, well, I'm sure you did, but what are the comments, maybe your principles, on the lack of north-south mobility? The only thing you have available to these folks is I-75, right, or going all the way out to eighty-two?
Or heading down Logan if they would, if they were.
Going south.
If they're going south, yes, sir. Currently, at this time, there are long-range transportation plans to allow for additional network in the area, but that's correct at this, at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Brad? Yeah, I just wondered how many years you think it will take to develop the thing? So the people to get an idea about how the traffic would build up wouldn't be all at once.
Matt, do you want to speak to absorption? Sorry.
No, that's okay. I, I probably could have talked from back there. Um, you know, five to seven years total build-out, probably, depending on how sales are going, everything. Again, most of the stuff we build, well, everything we build is custom, so it takes a little longer to build those homes. Um, so where we may have sold lots and started on homes, actual move-in dates is probably the five-to-seven-year range for full build-out.
Yeah, I'd like to hear uh from uh community development, Mike or John, in terms of uh staff response to the application. And in particular, uh, how does this differ from what we concluded as a policy decision with respect to what was known as three hard-working Americans a few years ago? I, I'm not sure I understand where we ever gave anybody the impression we were willing to, to reconsider the DRGR designation.
Neil, Neil asked me to say we'd like a chance to rebut following public comment. Thank you.
Whatever.
Good evening. I'm Mike Fieg, I'm with Community Development for the Record. Did you want to, did you want me to just go forward with my presentation? Because a lot of my, you'll get some answers to your questions in my.
You know, I, I think we've been here, done this uh in terms of other cases. And we've, we've, as a council, has never, have never directed staff or directed anybody to say, you know, let's take another look at the DRGR designation. And it's a policy decision.
Correct.
And it's very simple. We vote it up or down based upon, you know, how we individually feel about the policy. I mean, we really, I don't want to get into a debate about the specifics of the plan or the hydrology report or wherever. It's a, it's simply a vote of, do we continue with our policy or not? So I'm, you know, I'm asking you to speak for that, because, speak to that, because we've recently been through that whole exercise in another, in another case.
And, and Councilman Corey is correct. Uh, as you read through the staff report and pepper throughout the, the staff presentation, is the understanding that this is a policy decision to be made by city council. So when you review the staff report, you will see that there is not a recommendation of approval or denial one way. There is simply a restatement of this is a policy decision. And to Councilman Corey's point, there has not been any direction given by council to staff to reconsider any of these policies. Um, so there, there has not been a misunderstanding on the staff side that now the DRGR is potentially open for business. Uh, that, that hasn't occurred, that this is still a policy decision to be made by city council. So essentially, from the staff perspective, it's, it's a few different decisions you have to make, really. It's um, again, because the request here is to take a future land use category that exists within the city already and amend it. And by amending it, you amend it to accommodate this project. So it's not necessarily them fitting into the nice, neat box of this future land use category. They would have to amend it in order to get it. So that's one aspect of it that you have to look at and determine whether or not you think that's acceptable. The other aspect of it is, uh, if you were to make the determination that the DRGR is not appropriate for this property, based on what you've heard from the applicant, does that mean that their proposed future land use category of urban fringe is the appropriate? mean that their proposed future land use category of urban fringe is the appropriate category? So there's a few different things that you would need to consider as part of your policy decision here and whether or not to transmit ultimately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr., I'd like to...
Go ahead.
Thank you, okay. I vote, make a motion that we transmit it. It sounds like the company has done extensive research on hydraulics and how the water is going to move, so if, they're actually going to make it better, is how I'm reading it and understanding it. So the water quality is going to get better, there's going to be monitoring, the irrigation is going to be recycled, you guys have heard it. So I'm in favor of seeing what we can do to help the water problem in this area.
No second. Fred?
We still haven't even got the public comment.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I'm, and we have discussed DRGR in the past, developing.
Okay. Fred?
Yeah, I want to make a point. I think that you would agree with me. This is an isolated piece of property that is way out to the east. It actually, the water flow there eventually flows to the west. The big DRGR, which I hear people fishing around about, it's a completely different animal. First of all, it's the bottom of the bowl, and a drain for the bowl is the Imperial River. When the Imperial River is up, all that water that pours in by sheet flow has no place to go except build up. So if we ever do develop it, it's got to be developed at a very low density. Otherwise, you're going to have to have ponds with 10, 12-foot-high dikes around them, because you don't have enough room. Basically, somebody has the idea of building two and three-story buildings on them. So this is a separate property. What you do with this should have no bearing on the main DRGR, which is basically down by Bonita Grandi, north of Terry Street at this point. Eventually, it was, it was originally DRGR west or south of Terry Street. That's been nibbled out. But this part that's north, that's the main DRGR, and there's probably 2,000, 3,000 acres of developable land. So it would change the whole complex of the city if you put something in there. I'm not saying you couldn't, but I think it needs to be low-density. It has nothing to do with this. Separate issue.
Okay, my comment, did you know it was DRGR when you bought the property? Did you pay a lot of money for that property? Are you going to make a lot of money if we let you build on it? The policy of the city has been leave the DRGR alone. That's my opinion. I, can I make a motion now or a public comment?
A public comment, too.
Public comment?
Before getting to public comment, I would just note for the record, with regards to Councilman Carr's motion to go ahead and transmit, what you heard tonight entailed an additional reduction in density from 388 down to 299. That's new. Wasn't aware of that. What I will say, though, to that point, though, is that the urban fringe district, when it comes to density, approves density within a range, and the range was amended to accommodate their previous density numbers. So this new reduction is no longer within range. So they would need to, once again, amend the language to reduce the range down to their new reduced density number. So I would say that if there is a vote to transmit tonight, that you do so with the understanding that they would need to, once again, amend the language of the future land use category to accommodate this new density, this new density reduction.
Public comment?
Mayor, I'd like to call the registered public speakers first, and then we can call up all others. The first speaker is Jim Fitzpatrick, and he'll be followed by William Hebner.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. Again, I am Jim Fitzpatrick. I'm a resident at 28539 FB Fowler Court here in Bonita Springs. For full disclosure, I'm also a candidate for the Bonita Springs City Council in District Six. On May 16th, the local planning agency conducted a hearing regarding the proposed amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, which are now before you. After these presentations from the developer, Seagate, staff comments were summarized, and comments were heard from residents. The role for the local planning agency is to review and make recommendations based upon the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, and the agency unanimously declined to recommend the proposed amendments and changes to the related maps. I hope, if you've not already reviewed the minutes of the 16th meeting, I would encourage that you pay particular attention to the opening staff comments and their summary, where they state, "While the staff acknowledges there are some positive aspects to the requested amendments, this proposal contains a significant departure from the city and county DRGR policies." As a resident of the impacted district, I support the current land use designations of DRGR, wetlands, and resource protection. In request that you follow the direction of your local planning agency and decline the requested amendments, my primary concerns are as follows. One, of the 204 acres, 107 acres sit on designated wetlands. Two, the property is located within the primary habitat for Florida Panther. They said they haven't seen any, but if you go to the crew site, you'll see Panthers on the trail of the crew trails on their Facebook page. But lastly, and more importantly, is your next agenda item addresses changes to the comprehensive plan, and none of these are incorporated in those that you're going to address, the next agenda item. There are over 1,100 new residential units in a major commercial center currently under construction in our district. Each of those development went through its own review and approval process years ago, and were addressed on a one-off basis. We do not know the full effects of replacing all of this natural habitat with asphalt, their retention ponds. We do not know their effects on the increased traffic congestion associated with those 1,100 units. We do not know the full impact of stormwater retention impacts based upon prior approvals, floodwater mitigation. These all need to be considered in making a strategic change to the comprehensive plan. So in closing, I'd like to recognize the great work of the staff of the city's Planning Division for their preparation of the staff analysis. That 32-page document is outstanding. And I would encourage that you honor the LPA's recommendation to not approve the amendments and also correlated map changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
William Hebner, and he'll be followed by Dennis Church.
You can line up if you would, it might help.
Hello, I'm William Hebner. I live in Palmira, so this would be across the street from the development. Before I looked into the matter here, when I found out about the matter, I felt like I was always for the DRGR designation, but the more I investigate and hear information, when you hear about the canal being there, subsequent, you know, a canal be put in, all the disturbed land with the mine pits, and then some of the developers' presentations with their geologists, it sounds like it's not really fitting with the DRGR designation, this particular piece of property. So I would recommend you think about that, that it, maybe at one time, it did fit DRGR, but it doesn't seem with the passing of time and all the disturbance there that it fits into that. Now, if the, if you would move it to the urban fringe community designation, I did have an issue with one of the developers' changes or what they proposed on protecting the groundwater resources. I was looking at Policy 1.7.1, and that's where they talk about the protecting groundwater resources. The presentation, it kind of glossed over a little bit about irrigation. They mentioned about retention ponds being used for irrigation, but they also intend to use groundwater for irrigation, so they're using both. So my concern is using any of the groundwater that's still there for irrigation. I know in Palmira, we're only permitted to use retention ponds for irrigation. I think we've looked, asked the city in years past if we could use groundwater, and they won't allow us to tap into any wells, so we just use our retention ponds for our irrigation. So that would be something I would suggest that you ask the developers about. The only other thing that I ask is, there was no mention about height requirements on any of the buildings. I thought I saw someplace where it was 60 feet, but I'm not sure, and I would, maybe the developer and other comments can talk about how the height requirements. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dennis Church, and he'll be followed by Bill Van Tassel.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Church. I live at 27271 Richview Court. I've been a resident of Bonita Springs for 34 years. I have been a certified planner and a licensed landscape architect for that time. I've served as a chair of the Lee County LPA, and I served as a chair of the Bonita Springs YMCA Board of Directors. And I bring up the YMCA because that property, along with the city soccer fields, were all in the DRGR, and the city commission made the courageous decision to allow that use, and it's an asset to the community. So the applicant has demonstrated technical and policy reasons why this should approve. I'm not going to get into that detail. The DRGR designation seems to be the major sticking point. So, as Ms. Montgomery explained, it's a historic vestige of an agreement that was made between Lee County and the state 40 years ago. Basically, the state wanted Lee County to only allow development in Lehigh Acres and Cape Coral in lieu of new greenfield development. They wanted to fill all those planted lots, and so a settlement was made that the county painted huge swaths of the county as DRGR. And so the DRGR, Density Reduction, Groundwater Resource, it's really about density reduction. There was a population accommodation issue back then. The groundwater recharge, as experts here have explained, is not really the issue. Groundwater resources, at least the small portion of the groundwater in the DRGR that's extracted for potable wellfields, is protected by wellfield ordinances. Somehow, over time, the DRGR became a sacred cow, a pristine area in everybody's minds, and it's become the third rail of land use policy in Lee County. Also, around 1995, the Water Management District started buying up lands north of Bonita Beach Road. They bought huge swaths of land for preserve and for flood protection. They acquired the lands they thought was appropriate. They did not buy the land south of the Keel Canal, this strip of land between Bonita Beach Road and the Keel Canal, which makes this site unique. The applicant has explained the unique characteristics of the site, and it's true. So the line where the DRGR was established went down to Bonita Beach Road, and then some south of what would be Bonita Beach Road at the far east end. Every community down that stretch was rezoned, went through a comp plan amendment, just like this project is going through. They were all either outlined suburban, DRGR, they were all approved by previous city commissions, and the people that lived there are a great addition to our community. I think that the proper thing to do, the fair, appropriate, and one might say courageous thing to do, is to afford this applicant the same type of land use their neighbors to the south have. Thank you.
Bill Van Tassel?
I've lived here since 19, or 2008, not 1968, 2008, and my first real experience with Bonita Springs was, I think it was Fae, this tropical storm Fae, that dumped a ton of rain, and the sheet flow, that you might have mentioned earlier, came all the way down across and up to Bonita Beach Road. That whole property where the developers talking about, the property where the RVs are now, that used to be migrant housing, I believe, and poor families there. And because of the, because of the potential for that flooding to continue over the years, that the city at that time refused to let the migrants move back in, and those houses were turned, torn down, and they eventually were, you allowed the RV park to show up. And if you're familiar with Bonita Beach Road and that area, we have probably the ugliest section of Bonita Beach Road that exists. There's not a tree on it, we have a deep ditch that's about five or six feet deep, but that was all put in because of flood control. And my concern is, is that if you start to develop off of the plan that you had, putting new developments in, that this flooding problem that we do have, and we almost had it in this last seven inches of rain we had the other day, is going to continue, and it's going to be worse if you allow for developments to be put in with pave-over and, you know, you know, everything they talked about. And they did a really amazing job in the presentation. But I think the bottom line is that people are living here now. The more you put in, the more it's going to be a problem for us down the road. One of the complaints I saw on the overview that they had here was that the exits or entrances to the new proposed community is directly across from the exits and entrances to Palmira. And you really need to be out there on Bonita Beach Road, because the people that come from the south, they come up Logan, and they come over Bonita Beach Road, and people are going 60 and 70 miles an hour on that road. It's very, very difficult for people to gain access to the road, especially in the times of the morning or the evening, you know, rush hours. The last comment I have is that I'm concerned, and this appears to be an exception, I apologize, I've never been to one of your meetings before, but it seems this policy is an exception to the existing policy. And I've always been cognizant of the fact that if you go down a sloppily steep road, it can be a problem, and it's going to be a problem going forward. So that's my comment, and I just appreciate the time talking.
Thank you, sir.
We have no additional registered speakers, so we can now call forth anyone else who would like to speak.
Better hurry up, come on up.
And Mayor and Council, just for the, just for the record, if staff does have a presentation, if you wanted to see any of those elements and discuss any of the questions that came up at the staff after the public comment, and the applicant has asked the right to rebut, and that includes staff and the public, so just wanted to...
Coffee break.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. My name's Steve Rivette. I live in the community of Palmira, and I would like to just lend some very serious support to what Mr. Van Tassel just said. When we come out of Palmira, if you are wanting to go west on Bonita Beach Road, you cross two lanes of oncoming traffic heading east, plus a turn lane coming east that's turning into Palmira. That's to get out to the median. You have two lanes of traffic... You have two lanes of traffic going west, and as he said, most of those folks are going 50, 60 mile an hour, sometimes more, plus a lane turning left to come into Palmira. So as I come out of Palmira to go west, I literally have to turn in front of somebody who is turning left to come in, across four lanes of conflicting traffic, a lot of whom are speeding. And it just seems to me if we now add two entrances directly across from that, and these people are going to, some of which are going to be wanting to head east on Bonita, and they're going to be crossing and all that, it's going to be a mess. We haven't had any, to my knowledge, any fatalities out there yet, but we have had accidents, some of which have been harmful to people. So I think in addition to considering the water flow, which I think is extremely important, please consider the traffic there as well and the safety involved with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Who got next now? We got the...
If you want, if you want to have any additional questions for staff or see their presentation, you should probably do that before you allow the applicant to rebut. That way the applicant...
Staff, Mike, get up here. Get all the way in the back. You need to exercise, I guess.
I was going to leave it up to council. If you wanted to see the presentation, I'm happy to do it. If not, I would just ask that you accept the staff report and presentation for the record, and if you want to give me maybe one or two minutes to summarize it, I can do that. So it's council's pleasure.
Summary.
Summary.
Summary. Go ahead, Mike.
Summary. Okay. So you heard a pretty detailed analysis from the applicant, and again, the purpose of the staff report and the purpose of the presentation was really to make sure that you had everything to keep in mind. Now, again, that don't mean that any type of positive or negative slant, but there were certain aspects of the presentation that were not discussed as much as they would have been in the staff side of the presentation. So just a few things just to keep in mind. When it comes to strategic priorities, that's another thing that we look at when we review these types of cases. You do have a strategic priority right now that is geared towards your downtown as a place to really deal with density increases and not so much outskirts of the city. So that is another policy decision to keep in mind going forward. You do have other infill opportunities elsewhere in the city that wouldn't involve an expansion of city boundaries. Now, whether or not it would be an establishment of a project of density of this scope, it would depend on the property. We'd have to do further analysis, but that's something else for you to consider as well. So I can go on, but those are essentially the big things I wanted to make sure that were captured in the staff report.
Any questions, Fred?
One point. First speaker said that the county, you have the illusion from what was said, that the county is tougher on building in the DRGR in this city, and it's the other way around. Would you not agree with that?
I would agree with that. I'm familiar that in the county, they also offer something called TDR, which is a transfer of development rights, and they also allow you to do density transfers in their DRGR. So you can transfer density from DRGR land to non-DRGR land. We don't have those components in the city's DRGR policy.
But you can do almost anything you want to do in the DRGR of the county. That's my point.
They have a much more, I'll say, the list of uses and things that they consider appropriate are not the same as the city's. So for an example, mining is an activity in the county's DRGR that is permitted. So the existing mine that's there within the county's DRGR is an appropriate use under the eyes of the county. That's an example of something that you do not allow in your DRGR.
About the YMCA, now that's approved. There's certain things that are allowed in the DRGR when they originally put it out there.
Sure.
And one was like the YMCA. What are some of the other ones that the county originally...
There's certain community-focused uses that would be considered appropriate, agricultural uses, religious uses, things of that nature. But in terms of large-scale development or a development that's clustered, such as what you're seeing here, it would require the change, which is why they are here.
Anybody else? Yes, I am.
Derek, I've got a question for you. Too bad. You've talked about policy. So if we make a decision tonight and we amend or change our policy, which it sounds like we're doing, correct?
You're doing, you would be changing the policy for a specific piece of property, and you'd be extending essentially an existing land use category into that property because you feel that that property, based on what's been presented, is different from other pieces of property. It does not necessarily open the door to other properties coming in, as what we saw with the 300 Working Americans was following up on BG Mine, because we made an exception. One instance does not mean that exception applies in all instances, and each project and development plans are different.
I don't want to replicate previous council's mistakes. So what you're saying is this is a single instance, and we're not putting ourselves in any jeopardy as a city?
Well, what I'm saying is the single incidence, and that would be the position the city would take in defending a lawsuit. But whenever somebody does something, it's, you know, it's what the perception is by others, not always what the reality is.
Chances of opening ourselves up for lawsuit?
I'm sure already being...
I'm not even going to entertain...
Do you have a rebuttal?
I don't have a rebuttal at all.
I mean, the applicant.
All I would ask is, yes, the applicant, if they want to do the rebuttal, the only thing I would ask is that, based on Mike's comments, that you accept both the PowerPoints of the applicant and staff into the record, because I don't think that the applicant's PowerPoint was in your packets.
Thank you. Neil Montgomery again for the record. Neil, one second.
Fred, did I miss you, Fred?
Well, I just want to make, let Neil do what she wants to do. Well, let me say, one of the speakers was concerned about water flowing south, and what was presented is they're going to drain towards the Keel Canal, which is north.
Correct. And I was going to start off by saying that, well, let me start off by addressing the policy issue, and I think Mr. Rooney would agree with me, and that is, in the land use perspective, you'll have to look at each parcel individually and consider the unique aspects of that property. So a decision on the subject property doesn't change everything else in the DRGR. And I know you guys had a lawsuit on a parcel of property that is in a rural location, and the judge noted that. I would note about this subject property, if you look, well, first off, let me say this, the county DRGR policy 1.5 says that these areas have minimal to no infrastructure. Ms. Crespo clearly pointed out, this property has infrastructure. It has roads. It has water. It has sewer. It's proximate to commercial. It has all the requisite public infrastructure. This is not a rural location. One of the things that you heard is, if you do nothing, the environmental quality of this site deteriorates. The exotics will increase. The whiteness that Dr. Brown pointed out will continue. The water quality will continue to deteriorate. The drainage will continue to deteriorate. The site is not going to get better on its own. It has to have active engagement to fix it. I will ask David Brown to address the question the person raised, that we're going to cause flooding, because I think that's a misnomer.
Again, David Brown for the record. The project has an ERP, Environmental Resource Permit issued by the South Florida Water Management District. One of the core tenets of an ERP is you cannot cause or induce flooding. Also, the discharge rates for stormwater, pre-development stormwater rates, or I'm sorry, post-development stormwater rates must be equal to or less than pre-development stormwater rates. So you can't increase stormwater rates, and you can't by virtue of that permit, and they have the permit, they were issued that and met the conditions of issuance from the South Florida Water Management District, will not cause additional flooding. I want to say one other thing on groundwater use. Groundwater will only be used as a standby source, just as the wells orbit loose to the south. You can't have a primary source of groundwater. So the primary source for irrigation is absolutely recycled stormwater. Thank you.
There's a question or concern raised about Panthers. Because this property has already gone through the permitting process, it will be required to pay $1 million in Panther mitigation, which will acquire Panther land and approve Panther lands. So that issue will be addressed. This property in its current state is not suitable Panther habitat. It doesn't have prey, it's not in a location you would want to encourage your Panther to live. So it's a better solution for the Panthers to have acquisition of real Panther habitat. The GR, DRGR, if you look at the county's original policy, was to preserve lands in areas where groundwater recharge occurs. Mr. Brown testified earlier as an expert, this site does not have any groundwater recharge in its current form, and it's easy to understand why. You have a big canal to the north that caused change to drainage, and you have a big dam called Bonita Beach Road to the south. Again, nothing is going to improve the quality of that site unless you actively engage with the property. And part of the reason why the county has been making changes in the DRGR is because there's limited uses for the property. Mining or natural resource extraction was one of them, and as Mike Fionn pointed out, you don't have that use. That was at least a reasonable use of the property, and the county included it when they adopted that policy, so they could at least say, look, we do have a reasonable use of the property. If we don't provide them with a reasonable use of the property, that puts them and the city in a quandary, because the proposal addresses all the things that are studied that the city was required to do, and they have done on occasion, but they've never adopted. But the expert you have here went through those list of items that you're supposed to study. They studied them, and they provided you with the data and analysis. And I would submit, from a technical standpoint, that we've met the burden of proof and that this should be transmitted. I will turn it over to Alexis, so she can, as the expert in planning, summarize it from a planning perspective.
Thank you. I agree with Neil entirely, and I didn't do a very technical presentation. I wanted to show a lot of images of how the Bonita Beach corridor is developing and how we're different, but in my professional planning opinion, based upon the Bonita Springs Comprehensive Plan, this site does not comply with your policy for DRGR lands. This site is not functioning as DRGR from an environmental standpoint, a hydrological standpoint. It's not in areas located without infrastructure. It's on an arterial roadway. So we are much more consistent with a low-density category like the urban fringe being requested. I have one slide here, and I tried to put this on the record early as well, which is, and it was brought up by Councilman Corey, which is, if we make this decision today, doesn't that open the door for DRGR proper, which is, you know, this large, thousands of acres, as was noted earlier? And we submit that the criteria we have met, the infrastructure available to the site, the level of impact, the development along the corridor of Bonita Beach Road, would put this site in a very unique position when compared to anything over in that western DRGR area.
Is that anecdotal, or have you got research on it?
Yes, sir. Our data and analysis shows that we have thousands of feet of drainage on a four-lane arterial roadway.
No, not that. You just made a statement that there's not a piece of property within the DRGR in the gray area that matches up with this property. I just ask, do you have factual data that supports that position?
From a geographic standpoint, none of those parcels would have direct access to arterial roadway. They're all served by...
I'm not asking about that. I'm asking about whether or not the characteristics that Dr. Brown or Mr. Brown alluded to, you say is unique to this parcel. And I'm saying, then you said there was no parcel in the gray area that matched up. So...
Let me correct myself. From a land use standpoint, from an infrastructure standpoint, and from a development pattern standpoint, I have certainly, nor has our team, explored the hydrology of each and every parcel in that area. It was the context from a land use and infrastructure standpoint.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you. So how are we different? On the record for Sophia, there was stated flooding issues. We have our ERP in hand, which causes us to be different. There was issues with available infrastructure, the data analysis for environmental resources, our backup data analysis provides the necessary information on all those points. Failed to address traffic concerns. We are, again, uniquely located on an arterial roadway. And then downtown, Mike did reference that there is directive to increase densities in downtown. I would submit, the buyer or renter or resident of your downtown is a very different buyer, resident of this project. I don't believe they will compete. These will be, again, larger custom homes, which are not available largely in the downtown, and so we would submit that this will not compete with that strategic priority of the city. Thank you.
I have a question for the city manager. Do we have a report from the local planning agency? Has they denied this project?
We got their minutes.
It's in the package.
Dinner?
Yes.
And they denied it.
Hundred percent.
And that was stated by community development.
Okay, yeah, because I asked. Any more public comment? Rebuttal? Are we ready for a vote there, Mr.?
If you are.
Do we get a second to have it transmitted?
I think...
You didn't get a check.
Councilmember Carr, if you want to restate your motion, because it was different time.
Okay. I make a motion that we transmit with the amendments, and they fix the traffic due to new density, and we transmit it to the Florida Department of Commerce. They have their permit from the South Water Management. They are going to make the project better. To me, it's just common sense to go ahead with it, but I guess we'll see.
I don't hear a second. I make a motion to deny.
Second?
Any other comments? Go call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
No.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Now, 11A, 11B, and C. 11B and C is a matter of, the year at equal, the evaluation of the Comprehensive Plan was sent to the state and was approved, so...
And I'll read this title aloud, Mayor.
Mike, just one second.
Yeah, one second.
Can we take a break right now? All these people. Let's take a break while I, like, get some exercise.
Minutes?
Aye.
(noise)
Yes, exactly.
Only known to a few.
Okay, here we are.
I gotta talk to them about those things I handed you.
Yes.
No, they're kind of important.
Russ?
ERA.
It isn't important these days.
Your presentation.
Well, I just wanted to point out, Mike, you can read both titles because the staff report is combined. So she can do one presentation, you can hear both items at the same time.
Oh, good.
I was just trying to make things shorter.
Bogo.
Okay.
Can start?
He has to read it.
He's gotta read it in.
And Mike, the only problem is you're gonna have to read them without stopping.
More taking a breath.
No, no, no.
And I'm just commenting that these have been approved by the state. We approved them, sent them to the state. They come back for our final approval. So we don't need to go through the whole thing. But you need to read them in. Thank you, Mike.
Is the meeting back in session? Back in session? Are we on air? Back in session? Okay. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance number 02-16, as amended, adopting the state-required amendments based on the 2023 Evaluation and Appraisal Review. So as to amend the preface, housing element, infrastructure element, intergovernmental coordination element, public schools, facilities element and definitions, to revise and update the existing goals, objectives and policies and data and analysis in accordance with the mandates set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing conflicts clause and a severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes. The next ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance number 02-16, as amended, so as to amend the future land use element, transportation element, housing element, infrastructure element, coastal conservation management element, recreation and open space element, intergovernmental coordination element, capital improvements element, and public participation, monitoring, updating and evaluation procedures element, public schools, facilities element and definitions, to revise and update the existing goals, objectives and policies and data and analysis in accordance with Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
Margaret Banyan.
Yeah.
Would it be all right if we approved, vote to approve both of these at one time? I make a motion?
Well, you have a decision you have to make, Mayor. So if I may do a short presentation.
And we still need public comment, too.
Please, public comment? I can make a motion. Make a public comment? Make a motion that we accept?
Mayor, you do have a decision that you have to make before you move to adopt, so...
Option two. Is that what you're talking about, Dr. Banyan?
Well, there's... I have a very short presentation, but...
Yes, no, please. If that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, there, in the adoption, there is one change that you need to make a decision on. So before it gets adopted, there's two options that need to be reviewed. So Dr. Banyan just wants to let you know what the two of them are. So when you make your final adoption, you're picking the option that you think is the right policy for the city.
What are these changes you made? Margaret?
Yes, so I'm gonna, I have a slideshow. It's very short. And if I may go through this very briefly. I know you've been in place all night. So I want to be respectful of your time. So just a quick overview that the, you have two sets of amendments before you. One is the state-required amendments, and the other is the optional amendments. Those are running on two, on two tracks, but they are separate amendments. And it's important to point out that the state-required amendments, those were based on state law from 2017 to 2022. So changes in legislation during that period of time. And you're very familiar with the optional amendments and the approach that we took there. Just a quick overview. We started with the LPA transmittal back in February. Did public meetings. We did the transmittal with council in early March. And then the process is we send it to the state. For either state-required amendments, go through a state-coordinated review. Optional amendments go through an expedited review. The state gives us comments back. And we have to deal with those comments at the adoption hearing. So those are the state comments that I need you to be aware of. So with the state-required amendments, this is also in your supplementary packet. So the Department of Commerce, what they do is during this coordinated review process, they provide a report that's called an ORC report, objections, recommendations and comments. The comments that the state provided, they're technical assistance comments. And overall, the goal of technical assistance comments are to improve the city's plan. It does not form a basis to whether the plan is in compliance with the state. So it's a comment that the state makes to the cities to say you might, you may need to address this issue. So in 2023, July of 2023, following the EAR process, the state did make a change in the legislation requiring the planning period to be increased to a 10-year and a 20-year planning period. Those were not reflected in our EAR, and they were not reflected in the state-required comments because it was after the EAR was produced. So due to that, the state provided a comment to say that the city should address that legislation. So there's three options to respond to the state. The first option is to request an extension of the state-required amendments. Generally, that's a two-to-three-month extension. The second option is to conduct a process to do, to address the state comments, but to do it in the next several years. So that might be the next year or the next two years, three years. The third option is to address that 2023 legislation when you do your next year in 2030. The, each option has some limits. The first option requesting an extension, I'm not sure that the work that's required to address the state comment, I'm not sure that could be done in two to three months. There's a decent amount of data and analysis that needs to be done. And there's no opportunity to do sufficient public comment if we go with option one, if you go with option one. The second option is to, for the city to make a decision that you'll address the state, that legislation, in the next two to three years. That has some merit to it in that you would have time to plan, you would have time to budget, you would have time to ensure that your data and analysis is sufficient. And because doing the maps and doing the data does take some time, it would allow you that time. The third option is to just wait until 2030. And the problem with doing that is if you wait, you'll be very close. So 2030, your 10-year planning horizon would be 2040. And you would be pretty far out of compliance with their 20-year arrangement. The advantage is you would be just doing the amendments all at once. But those, more or less, I think option two might be your best approach. The work has to be done anyway. So there's... The work is the work. And so to kind of meeting both of the advantages, I think option two might be the best approach for you. But it's your decision that you'll have to make tonight. So the optional amendments, just as a quick update, we did plan amendments. We rewrote some of the high priority goals, objectives, policies. And we rewrote the public participation procedures. There, I also note that some additional amendments were provided in your packet, and those are highlighted in yellow. At transmittal, we did not have all the information from Florida Department of Transportation, and we didn't have all the information we needed from the school district. So in your packet, anything new is highlighted in yellow. And there really weren't many areas that happened. And that's only in your optional amendments. That was, there's nothing highlighted in yellow in the state-required. And then finally, with your optional amendments, the Florida Department of Commerce had no objections, recommendations or comments on those optional amendments. So you don't have to address anything relative to those to the state. Just a last reminder is that we've had sufficient public input, at least five different formal sessions, and then some one-on-one where we were able to meet with folks individually. So this is the last slide, Mayor, and this is the decision that y'all, we're asking you to make. So your first kind of order of business would be to weigh in on which option you would like us to take in terms of how to address the Florida Department of Commerce's comment. So option one, two or three. And then we would be looking for a motion to adopt the state-required amendments. And that's only if you choose option two or three. And then finally, a motion to adopt the optional amendments as amended. Because again, the optional amendments have been amended since transmittal. That is my short presentation, and I am ready to chat.
City manager, can you come up with a suggestion on this thing? You're gonna have to do the work.
If you don't mind, I have a recommendation. Option two.
Option two.
Exactly.
It would be staff's recommendation that you look at option two. That would also open the door if you wanted to, if there's any other optional amendments that we needed to look at in between the next year and 2030. You would have an opportunity to address that. That time, we could use...
We could always make amendment.
Correct. So option two is the recommendation.
I second that motion. Comment, roll call?
So...
Just...
To be clear, this is that you're choosing, we have three motions, three different separate motions we're asking for. Number one is to choose option two, which you have a motion a second.
And that's the between the years. Between, all the best decisions are made between the years.
We gotta do this one first.
Correct.
And then we go to the, okay, yes.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Folic. Deputy Mayor Forbes. Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Okay, what's the next motion?
Is to adopt the...
One and two, or?
The ordinance on the state amended.
State amended?
Mandated year amendments.
So moved. Second.
Comment, roll call?
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic. Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Now we adapt the next minute.
This is the optional.
Optional amendments.
Motion to approve the optional amendment.
Second.
Comment?
Can I add, ask that you move to approve them as a...
Can I add, ask that you move to approve them as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
As amended, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Well, Margaret, I guess we, we won't see you for a while.
Yes. Thanks, everyone.
You can help us out if we get in trouble. Thank you so much for your service to the city beneath its frame.
Thank you, and good to see everyone.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Yeah, you're gonna get nothing. Okay, city managers items, please.
Yes, thank you, um, we have placed, uh, as we will continually on every single moving forward uh, agenda, an opportunity to discuss the budget. We gave you a presentation during um, the, the budget workshop that we just held earlier. We won't go into further detail, we've been here for a little while. But at this point, if there's any items that, uh, I'll take the C I P first. Is there any items on the C I P that we've addressed that you would like further information on or that you wanted to include additional C I P?
At one hundred and seventy-three thousand, uh, one hundred and seventy, that's one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, one, uh, um, one at the bottom of the page, you added in there.
Oh, so let me.
Already in the budget?
Correct, it's already in the budget.
Not adding into that.
Correct, no, it's not, it's already in the budget. No, um, this, that is referring to the operational budget, right now I'm on the C I P though. Okay, um, then second would be the operational budget. Um, as, as the mayor just indicated, we provided a balanced budget based on con- the continuation service, which means um, the, the first amount was only about a two to three percent increase. We, those are estimates on what we believe the contract cost that will go up, that's the current level of service. Then we provided a spreadsheet with our additional, that's your staff's additional requests. Um, if there's any questions on any of those, as well as if there's any additional operating budget that you'd like us to look at or consider.
We had, we hired five people last year, we hired four people this year, that's nine people. Where's the government light? You're asking for four new people.
I am, yes, I am, sir.
And last year, we hired four, five people.
Correct. And your responsibilities in your population have grown, most recently, uh, our response to hurricanes. There was never anticipated a department re- um, actually enforcing, regulating, and looking at FEMA operations. We have an extension of that through community development, but there are significant in-house requirements, both by FEMA and the state of Florida. Um, when we incorporate as a city, many of our disaster response was in partnership with Lee County. Um, that is not, in many of those instances, that is not even possible anymore. The city will not receive reimbursement unless we are providing those services. Um, and so there is a significant increase in the amount of work that needs to be done preparing all year long for storms. Um, as we've indicated with the request for employees, uh, which you're indicated from last year was neighborhood services. Um, you've also had an increase in population in non-gated communities that demands a higher level of service. But again, these are optional uh, proposals to you all to discuss levels of service and able to provide compliance with new state and federal regulations.
Well, basically, it's the state and the federal government creating these extra.
Correct, and I have two amazing mentors who helped me play, be in this place. One is Mr. Gary Price and one is Mr. Krauswing. Both have said significantly, time after time, this is not government light, this is government right.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of respect for these people.
I'm just concerned that, you know, you, I know how fiscally responsible you are, but you know, I think, given what FEMA's done, given what we've just been through with the tropical storm and the impacts we've seen, you know, I just want to make sure we're adding enough people to get the right amount of resources to our residents. Yeah, I know that Tony and Neighborhood Services is, was called out a lot. And if we get another major storm, uh, it's gonna be tough. I just, you know, my, my concern is that we haven't gone far enough in terms of staff.
Yeah, la- last year.
I would echo that as well, sir.
Last year, we did have uh, COVID money that we, we used to hire these four, five people, and that money isn't there to pay their salary now.
Um, no, it's correct, there was a one-time infusion of financial assistance from the federal government, but, but we made it clear, we use that money on existing government contracts. One was an L C S O contract we utilized, one was community ser- community development, we used it. So we made it clear that the, the costs of the employees coming in was a long-term cost. Once you add those positions, um, that, that is, that is long-term, long-term cost. Um, I do believe that we conservatively looked at this right now as far as uh, what our increase would be. Um, I, I, it is clear that one of those positions is a supervisor respectfully, because the existing supervisor who's a long-term employee, um, his role now is a hundred percent emergency management response. He's not able to provide supervi- supervisory services to Neighborhood Services. So that's why we asked for a supervisor and two inspectors. Um, to reiterate your concern since COVID and the boom in Airbnbs and um, vacation rentals, um, we are behind on our vacation rental inspections, which do lead to significant code enforcement cases u- usually. So I will speak with Tony, we were looking at a plan of, of how we could look to increase, um, but this was our conservative ask in understanding that we are government light, but um, we'll take a look as well. But, but there is definitely, um, as you know, um, over this past weekend, which is part of my other comments, is that um, you know, our staff, uh, both community development staff and Neighborhood Services were all deployed all weekend, so.
Also, all these, there are pieces of property in the city that are dedicated to the people forever, and there's nothing in our budget to maintain these properties. Some of them are filled up with, and Tony can tell you, uh, filled up with, the neighbors have encroached on them, they're, they dumped up, there's all kinds of trash, there's all kinds. I'm looking, not tonight, but in the near future, to come up with some idea with Tony as to how do we main, how do we clean up these properties and, and maintain them in the future? Now we're gonna have these demolition, demolition properties, and we're also gonna have to come up with a budget to maintain them in some sort of way. So this is food for thought, not this for tonight, we're busy tonight, so.
Um, we can take a look at, we previously had mitigation funds for properties that were in uh, certain disrepair, so we can look at that in.
Properties are ours.
Let us look at, let us look at the areas that are city properties that need mitigation or need some additional maintenance, um, and we'll, we'll look at what the need is there.
Yeah, okay, there's some that you wouldn't know, you know, but somehow they got deeded to people forever. And there's some on Benea Beach, and there's down on Michigan, there's, you know, they're all grown up or filled up with bicycles and.
So we have, before, we would look into those, because some of them are deeded, when you say deeded to the people, I, there, that's a, that's a wide range of information, because that could be previously Lee County, they could be non-, we've dealt with this on the beach specifically. We have properties that are not necessarily city properties, but there's no ownership recorded. Look, the Luke Street, the Luke Street canal, others. And so then when there is um, a nuisance there, we have to look at where, what we can do and um, and then look at what funding's available for that, but legally what we can do, because we, that's been a question before.
Okay, Derek, you got some more work for you.
I rate for cleaning up things as high as I can.
Anybody else? Public comment, have we had a public comment already?
Mayor.
Mayor and council report.
Before we get to mayor and council reports, you just done what you said with, with the staff uh, additions. I hear exactly what you're saying, but I would, uh, just to give like one example of, of the staff positions, you know, there are, the special events one, just take that one for example, right? In two thousand and thirteen, we had forty-five events. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, we had forty-five.
I'm not saying that we don't need them, I'm just saying, we're really coming, we got nine new people in, in two years.
I, well, I mean, with the size, with, with the size of the population.
It's all right, it's all right, don't worry about it, you don't have to criticize.
Well, no, I'm not criticizing you, I'm saying we, to maintain the level of service, we have to do it, because we had, like I said, in two thousand and thirteen, we had forty-five events. In two thousand and twenty-three, we had over a hundred. So I mean, if you, and, and that's just the size and the scope of them have continually grown, and like, Fourth of July is a great example, everybody from South West Florida comes to Benita. There, there is a large staff component associated with that.
These particular hires came on because of the federal government and the state government.
But we have to do it.
We gotta do it, so let's do it and be done with it.
Arlene, did we add nine new people?
No, no, sir.
Five last year, four this year.
No, 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 that's incorrect. I believe we added two code officers, correct, Tony? And then a rental inspection officer. Two years ago, two, two positions.
And two officers and two policemen.
That's not city, that's not the city's.
That's different.
No, that's a contract service. Similar to community development, it's a contract service, contract service, that's not the city employees.
We still got nine new people coming. We got four, we got four new people.
Unfortunately, that's incorrect, no, we have two that we asked for, which were code officers, and now you have uh, three to Neighborhood Services, one to Communications, and one to Parks and Rec.
Whatever, okay. This is, the bureaucracy just keeps growing as the people come.
No, our community is growing, where we need employees.
More people, more staff.
Are you campaigning, Mayor?
Huh?
Are you campaigning, is that what?
Yeah, I.
No, I'm, 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 I've been the same for.
No, could we stay focused?
I'm allowed to talk.
It's eight o'clock.
Express my opinion.
Well, it's like you make sense, I just encourage you to make sense.
It makes sense. We've been taken over by these other governments, is what I'm trying to say, not our fault.
That takes us to thirteen B.
I'm sorry, I, I've got, are we, are we concluded with uh, any other additional requests for operational budget?
I actually have one, um, but I wasn't sure if that was gonna be at the end under council member items or if you'd like me to do it now, that's appropriate. Okay, okay, that's it, I know we've been very busy tonight, so I'll try to keep it as quick as possible. But long story short, uh, I did my annual meeting with L C S O to discuss operations and opportunities uh, for us as a city and along the same lines of a, an ability to continue service that's appropriate for the level of population that we have. Um, I'm gonna ask staff to put together something, and I've, we've got some numbers on it from when we met with them, but essentially, it would be similar to my traditional ask every year, which has been two officers, with a, with a sergeant, because they are at a point now where the number of officers that we have uh, requires leadership within that. To put it in perspective, we, we're sixty thousand people, we're running on forty thousand person police force. Uh, that's approximately one officer for twenty-seven hundred people. There, the national average is two-point-five officers per one thousand residents. So if we were to actually follow that, we'd be at a hundred and fifty officers. I'm asking for three to put us to twenty-five. So with that, we would have a twenty-five-person police force for sixty thousand. We're still drastically under where we should be for a population uh, of sixty thousand, but the reason for that is because we went ten years where we kept it on the consent agenda and our city grew over twenty percent. So, that said, we are behind, we need to address it, and if we want to keep going in the direction of, of being uh, this great city that we've become, we have to address uh, law enforcement, we have to give them more, and I think that uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars um, is a drop in the bucket uh, to get us to twenty-five officers for a sixty-thousand-person city. I still think we're still underserving our population uh, as far as law enforcement goes by doing this, but I would uh, ask that we could consider this two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which would give, excuse me, get us from twenty-two officers to twenty-five, and it would give them a sergeant as well, so that's, yes.
Does the amount of crime correlate with the number of policemen we have?
Yes, no, well, population.
Very little crime.
Pop, exactly, population, I'm sorry.
You know, like in Chicago, they get shootings all the time. I'm sure they have more policemen than, than, than anybody else, and they got more crime than anywhere else.
Right.
So I don't think that, you can't compare them.
The population, population and crime rates, population and crime rates go hand in hand, because the more people that you have, the more people that you're, we are, put it this way, we are at, our calls for service are at an all-time high as a city that we've ever had. We're having more calls now than at any point in our twenty-five-year history, and we continue to grow faster than any city in Lee County. We can't continue at this rate without addressing law enforcement. Law enforcement is what makes it so that people now can go through the downtown with strollers and senior citizens and not be afraid. That's, that's, this is the direction we're going as a city, then we have to, we have to keep going that way, because if we let it drop off, you know, we're worried about whether we have enough employees to, to deal with rentals or whatever, you know, people leaving crap in their lawn. I'm talking about enough officers to deal with the situation when something pops off in Benita. When there's a situation and we need officers, there, there is no substitute. And there's no higher uh, or more significant obligation uh, that we have as a council uh, than the safety of our residents.
Amen, I agree with that.
And this is the first step, this is the first step for that, so. I would like to ask for uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars um, to allow the facilitation of two officers to be brought on with a supervisor, um, and it wouldn't be immediate, it would be budgeted now into so, for the next cycle. So April, I think, would be the first time that they would be able to get anything at all, so.
Just, I'm gonna ask a favor.
Yes, sir.
But part of this ask, asked for a report several months ago.
Yep.
We got an approximation from Captain uh, Lee.
Yep.
And never got the hard numbers.
Yep.
We have a problem with the fact that they issued ten thousand citations and approximately thirty percent of those were tickets. I want to know that number.
Yep.
And I want a commitment from them that they're going to ramp up that enforcement on traffic. We've got a problem with speeding in Benita, and that's not been it. Second thing is, we have a truck ordinance, and I don't see it being enforced the way it should be, and being told that there's no way to enforce it, respectfully, I disagree. So how are they gonna enforce the truck ordinance that we passed last year?
And, and I, I would love to, that, that's a very good point, but I want to bring this back to that conversation. When we had this conversation, the first thing I said was, anytime you hire an officer, you're hiring three to four officers, because it runs twenty-four hours a day, right? And now if we're gonna camp somebody down at the roundabout to make everybody comfortable that trucks aren't going through, that's one officer who's not in Rosemary Park, that's one officer who's not down by the beach, that's not by Benita Bay, he's sitting right there, and that's fine that he's sitting there, I'm happy with him to be there, but the point is, that's, we have, if we have twenty-two all day, now we have twenty-one all day, because one of them is sitting here addressing the truck ordinance.
Jesse, I've got the law enforcement background, I spent most of it as an agent, but I spent the time in the academy, I learned traffic. You put a law, you put an enforcement individual out there, two hours in the morning, two hours in the evening for a week or two, trucks go away. You don't have to have it seven days a week, or even five days a week.
Right.
You enforce it for a short period of time, and then you have to go back in about five or six months, but it's not gonna require an officer to do that, they know that. They don't like the idea of having to enforce that, but the bottom line is, we passed that ordinance, the business owners in downtown, I'd still get those calls. Hey, wanna see the picture of the trucks going by that you said wouldn't happen?
Well, and we said.
It's in our districts.
Well, oh, I know, and we told, hey, we said at the time, and I love, Kyle, I, me and Kyle had this conversation numerous times, this is not gonna eliminate a hundred percent of trucks, and on top of that, they have to go through the process, and then they would get pulled over after we're down there anyways, even if they were. So we knew that that was going to be a part of it, but at the, e- e- neither here nor there, the fact is it takes, it takes officers to do it, right? We agree with that. We are still significantly behind in regards to our obligations to our citizens due to our population. So if we want more officers and we want to be able to do things like efficiently patrol that area, which I really do too, then we need to have the manpower to do it. And this is a very big first step in al- in, in allowing that to happen.
It, it's kind of a redirection of those efforts, and I'm asking that they direct a portion of the time to.
That's fine, I have no problem having that conversation, and I think it's a good, it's a good conversation to have, and I think it'll be open to everyone. I can get you all the citation stuff too, yes.
Yes, Fred.
Yeah, I, first of all, on the ticketing, my biggest thing I want, I want tickets, I don't want warnings.
That's what I'm saying.
Tickets, real tickets, yeah, you and I are good. Yeah, now, secondly, I, I agree with the need that we have. Now, secondly, I, I agree with the need that we have for more enforcement. Because, it's my own opinion, I hope to hell I'm wrong, but I believe no matter how this election comes out in November, that we're gonna have unrest in this country like we've never seen before, no matter who wins. It's not gonna be as bad here as it is gonna be in Chicago and the other places. But it's gonna be, make crime statistics blow up. And so, I think having additional police officers is a good thing right now. That's my, I hope I'm wrong. I, I really hope we don't need them. Then we could chase the semis with them if we don't need them.
I also would like to know the budget that the sheriff has. And why don't we ask the county commissioners to fund the sheriff? I mean, two-hundred and almost fifty million dollars.
Let me explain. Couple things. Number one, the budget, we vote on it every year, so it's readily accessible to us. Number two, we have county officers, but we have a community PD. So, we, we have the, the great benefit of being able to latch on to LC SO, which gives us choppers and high-water vehicles and dogs and detectives and bomb squad and SWAT and all the rest of the toys that they have at, at an LC SO level that frankly, the cities who do it on their own don't have.
And jail.
And a jail. So, we get to tap into all of that as a rider on this agreement, and they also take care of our schools. So, we have a pretty.
That's separate, that's separate in the budget.
No, that's in their budget. Laura, Laura, that's, that's in their budget.
Correct.
So, they're eating that. So, addition to them eating, taking care of our schools, they are serving undermanned significantly, and it isn't the responsibility of the county. It's the, it's the responsibility of us because we have a Benita City Community PD. So.
No, 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 no. Wait a minute, Jesse. Every one of us in here that owns a home in Benita Springs is paying Lee County real estate taxes.
Right.
Included in the Lee County budget is the LC SO.
Right.
So, in addition to the two-and-a-half million dollars that we pay.
Right.
For community policing, you can add up that portion of the real estate tax play, paid to Lee County. That also gets paid for police protection.
Right.
So, let's not, you know, let's not.
But that, Fort Myers Beach does that too, and they have four officers.
This town does.
Right, but what is it, what is it like there compared to what is it like here? They just implemented the same model that we use for a reason.
All I'm saying is, Benita Springs pays a lot of money right now.
I'm not saying we don't pay money.
We didn't have community policing.
We'd still be paying, but we wouldn't have twenty-two officers that were just ours.
That's right. But, but they would have, LC SO would still have to cover.
Just like they have to take, have to take care of Fort Myers Beach and Lee High Acres, but we are not that.
And Sarah.
Right.
And Gateway.
Right, and they're all starting to go to community policing models because they want more. And if you want more, you have to pay for more.
What I'm suggesting is that we need to look at this in terms of we're adding something on top of what they're already committed to do.
Right.
We're not trying to replace the entire police.
No, I'm not questioning, right. For two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, I don't think you could replace an entire police force. What I'm saying is, give these guys a shot in the arm. They are protecting us, they're keeping us safe, they're making us the great city we are. If there, there are a million things in this budget that we could argue about that are significantly less than two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. What I'm asking for is a sergeant and two officers to make our streets safer because we, as an elected body, have been derelict on our duties for a decade. So, what I'm saying, it's not, it's not. We, our, our population has gone from forty to sixty. So, how, and we have not adjusted. So, that is on us. So, our, the safety of our citizens is completely dependent on our ability to make them safe via the police forces. This is the only, this is the most important obligation that we have as elected officials.
Jesse, we're a safe, we've not been derelict. That's, that's going to open up.
We had it on a consent agenda for, you weren't part of it. Nigel, you weren't part of it.
Wait, 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 wait.
You weren't part of it. But for ten years, it was on a consent, you weren't part of it either. Yeah, I'm not saying you guys were part of it. Fred is the only one up here who was even part of it.
You're out of order.
I'm not out of order. I'm still talking. I'm not out of order. I'm still talking.
And now you're not talking.
I'm still talking. I'll let you know when I'm done. Point being.
One at a time. We're not arguing back.
We're not arguing. We're just, we're on the same page.
Okay, I think we've, we've overdone it. Let's, wh- wh- where are we at, managers? Do you get a direction?
We can either.
We need to vote on something like that.
I think that we have more opportunity to bring back options for you. We can bring that as, for further discussion. You've got each meeting, we are continuing to provide budget updates. So, at this point, we understand that there is a request for us to give back the information on what two, one sergeant and two deputies is the request at, you said, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Two-twenty-four, seven.
And you pointed out earlier, some things then don't go away. That will be forever in our budget. And we just hired two sergeant and two deputies.
We're still undermanned. And nothing is permanent in our budget because we can change our budget every single year.
No, no, these people were paying.
I think I can summarize everything.
Okay, we, we've had the discussion. The city manager's taking care of it.
I just wanna say, I think, I think, I think we've gotten a field, the record, the request was for two-twenty-five to be added, paying out next April to fill those positions. I believe there was consensus from the council to go ahead and add that when we have a future budget meeting. And then there was a request from two council members. Councilman Corey was asking for, basically, he wanted to know what the standard level of service was, I'm paraphrasing it. And then what's additional above that, what we're at, what, what is the addition that we're getting with the community policing? So that, essentially, to help sell it to the taxpayers who are paying for all of this. And then from Councilman Fullock was to, he wants to see some reporting on what's, on, on what they're doing, including the downtown traffic. Right, I, I, I mean, so I don't think there's any, there's no argument about the request. It's just background information. That all can probably be provided when the budget item comes up.
Well, my comment is, I've seen a lot of officers pulling over a lot of cars. We're talking about traffic. That's down on the beach now. I don't go in your neighborhood, maybe.
You should, you're the mayor.
I don't go that, well, I do go down Pennsylvania Avenue. I never, that's a thirty miles an hour or twenty-five or so. I've never seen any trouble, you know, there's just stop signs in there. But anyways, they're doing a wonderful job. We can reward them with, with more.
Also, you, you criticized, we hired three new people for the city staff. I think city staff could do with a couple more hires.
Well, you know, somebody's gotta pay for these things.
Yep.
Okay? And I know, we're all wealthy, or we wouldn't be here, sitting out here. We all get, we all homesteaded, except for Jesse and I. We, the tax increase is limited to three percent. You know, if you're a renter, then your tax increase is gonna come back to you eventually. Me, I'm in a trust, so I can't homestead a trust. So, what, you know, but I can pay the bills. I can pay my own bills. But the other people that pay rent. We increase the mileage. Their rent goes up. This little young lady that was here today, she just signed a new contract to rent this restaurant. Her rent's gonna go up. So, I'm, I'm trying to look out for the people. Now, if that's campaigning, I work for you, not for the government. Thank you. We move along.
So, is there any action items for what you all need from what I just brought up?
I think that you're asking staff to reach out to the sheriff's office for some additional information. Maybe, maybe we can have a brief presentation by them at the next meeting if that's possible. We'll, we'll see.
No, once a year.
Once a, okay.
Once a year. But I want real numbers.
Lisa, is it possible to break down the, the Lee County real estate tax and, and the Lee County budget for LC SO to figure out how much Benita Springs contributes to that?
Unfortunately, that's quite complex. The reason being, Lee County has numerous revenue sources that go into the general fund, of which real estate tax is just one. So, and then LC SO is just one of many functions paid for it. So, it's never, never really a direct correlation just because of the way, and it's a governmental model. They, they operate just like every other county. So, to make a connection between those two is really not possible.
We know it's, we know it's something.
It is, it is there. It's, the, the revenue number goes in the general fund operating revenue, and those are general fund operating expenditures. So, they are in the budget that way. You're welcome.
City manager, are you still on deck?
I am, yes. I do need to provide some brief updates on FEMA. As you all are aware, we did.
Jamie actually had that.
I, I just had a request also. A couple months ago, I spoke to council regarding Lever's Key. And I would like to ask for fifteen thousand dollars, and I would like to try to start a pilot program for entrance fees. And I'll come back with a green sheet on that. But I'm asking fifteen thousand to be put aside, so I have something to work with to try to start up a pilot program.
Second, I mean, if you need one.
I think we have direction to place that on the items for next meeting.
Okay.
I do have some brief updates regarding FEMA. I wanted to advise, as you are aware, we received correspondence from Region Four Director that we will not be put prorated at this time. So, all of our residents are continuing to receive their discount. We did receive a letter that they are beginning the notification process of a potential to put us on a compliance status. That will provide the, a letter, they will be providing a letter to every policyholder. Your staff is working on a letter that we will also be sending out, talking about the items that we are currently addressing as well. We have been in constant communication with FEMA, and there are additional updates we're doing. We're using, utilizing our consultants as well. And the goal, we, we do have a goal of September seventeenth to provide a compliance action plan to them, sixty days. And then we have until mid-November for a final decision regarding, regarding the status. So, it is our goal that we would not be placed on probation. And we're doing everything possible to, to provide information to FEMA so that, to support that decision. And it's most likely we would add that decision out until November. We continue to have correspondence with the other jurisdictions and Lee County regularly, once a week. And the same decision was provided to all the same municipalities and the county. We're all given the same, the same answer. So, we're continuing to move forward. We're continuing to update Rick Scott's office, as well as Byron Donalds' office. Rick Scott was, office was concerned that a letter was being mailed out to all the residents and was doing some further inquiry on that into the DC office as well.
Very good. Thank you, Scott.
And then, just briefly, we did experience, I, I do need to say this for the record. We did experience conditions regarding, at the time, Tropical Storm Debbie, which is now Hurricane Debbie. I wanna make it clear that everyone understands that the EOC went to a level two on Friday, which enacted our response as well. Community development staff, as well as neighborhood services, were on call all weekend. That continued, we did have some coastal surge and hurricane or tropical storm winds that were recorded. We immediately began property assessments, substant, looking at initial IDAs. Initial damage assessments were done throughout the city. That information is provided to the EOC. So, we are working in compliance with our requirements for FEMA and the state. We're also assessing all city parks and facilities. Should there be any considered damage or concern, we will be applying for the appropriate refund, refund money for that as well.
Thank you, Arlene.
Oh, and then one last one is to remind everyone of the East Terry Street Improvement Project Workshop, which will be held here at City Hall. And it will be on, on August fifteenth at four, from four PM to six PM in the council chambers.
Okay, how about council reports?
Quick one, no TDC meeting last week, but I have one in eleven hours tomorrow. And I heard about, so, I'll gently start the asking process for some of their money, which is partially our money. And then, over the weekend, Sunday, I have to share this with you. I went out to the area along Pennsylvania, Arroyo, and I just thought it was the right thing to do. And I knew I was gonna get some people complaining about what happened and why we didn't fix the flooding. I, I probably spent seven hours on Sunday, talked to forty people, thirty-five, forty people. Not one single person had a complaint about our city or staff. They told me, oh, you just missed the Benita Springs Utilities Truck. Oh, you just missed one of your guys in a white truck. I know John Dolman was out there taking pictures because he sent me some. But, you know, the bottom line is, people were genuinely appreciative of what our city did over the weekend. Not one person complained, except a guy that doesn't like the fact that we require permits for windows and doors, but that's another story. So, thank you to our staff. Thanks to, to everybody. You did just phenomenal job.
Thank you. Anybody else report?
Arlene, the workshop?
You said the fifteen.
You have a report?
Thursday, August fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay, thank you.
From four PM to six PM.
Anybody else have a report?
Motion to adjourn?
We have public, public comment.
Public comment?
Sherry Fish?
Come on, hey, here we go. You got patience.
Sorry, I don't wanna keep you here very long. My name is Sherry Fish. I live at twenty-seven one hundred Estor Drive. And I have been here four years permanently as a resident. I live in my grandparents' home that they purchased in nineteen seventy-eight. So, we've been in Benita Springs a long time. I would like some guidance and help in trying to find out how we can get the canal around us dredged. The canal in front of us, for the storm this weekend, we actually had water in our yard, which for fifty years, never have seen that, except for Hurricane Ian. And there is a canal behind us, and it actually had a breach, and the water came over into three yards and down the street, down the street. Sorry, I don't do this normally, but I'm, you know, I just would like to find out how I can go about getting Benita Springs for the Imperial River to dredge out the canals. If we could get a couple of feet dredged out of the canals, would make a humongous difference for us that live in these small homes that have been here for an extremely long amount of time.
Well, may I comment? Are these public streets? Or you live on a public street or private street?
You're on a private, she's one of my neighbors.
We are on a private street, yes.
I think your canal is a private problem.
Okay, so all the canals that are on, off of the Imperial River are all private?
Well, depends, on Pennsylvania Avenue?
No.
Whatever.
They're off West Terry.
West Terry.
Between West Terry and.
That's a good question for the attorney, as, as to who's responsible for these canals. I mean, was it a private property or?
I mean, is there a grant, is there something we can do to try and prevent this from happening every time we have a storm? And it's gonna continue to get worse. It's never gonna get better because of all the silt and everything going into the canals. It's been there for years and years and years.
Well, I say, I paid to have my home, the house at the end of the street, I paid to have that done years ago. It's a private canal. They all are. So, the bottom line is, if we want it dredged, and I can tell you right now that the cost to do just a foot is gonna be about eight thousand dollars per home, just a foot.
So, now, you say all the canals are private?
No, the, the canals that are on West Terry, on West Terry Street to the river. All, I think, all of those, John, I believe, are private.
I know the ones.
Majority are.
I know where you live, that, that's private. That's a, JC Lane's a private road.
No, I'm talking about Estor Drive.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm talking about all the canals and she wants the whole city.
It would, you'd be talking a billion dollars?
I know, but what does, I guess, the question is, the impact of FEMA and all the stuff that happened after the hurricane, what's the price valuation of doing something that might prevent it from happening in the future, according to the government having come in?
But as a city, we don't have a billion dollars.
No, I understand that. But is there any grants or any programs in the federal government that we could get them to come and do? Does Cape Coral also, do they dredge theirs, or, you know, is that a city thing? I just, I'm curious.
Some of their canals are owned by the city.
And I would say, you know, also, you may wanna look, I don't know if you guys are, you're not at HOA down there?
No.
No. I was like, there's really, yeah, private solutions.
I should talk to Ellie, Ellie, our grant manager.
She might have a grant program or something.
You know, she, she might know some grants somewhere. She's our grant manager. And there are all kinds of grants floating around. So, good luck.
If there was one, I would have found.
Get out there with a bucket and a shovel or something. I don't know.
Hey, I'm, I'm just trying my best here.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll, we'll help you out somehow. Any more public comment? That's it, we're adjourned.